Call to order, the Wilson County Commission meeting of October the 17th, 2022. Welcome all of our guests here tonight and hope you had an opportunity to look at the slideshow, commissioners. Sarah Davenport did that for you, spent a lot of time on that, and so you can thank her for all the jabs she got at you. I will do this so I do not forget it this time. Comerden University had asked me to give all of you a sign, if you would, to put that up at someplace in your district, just representing Comerden University, so it should have been close to you at your desk. I meant to do that last month and I didn't do that. And this time, I will introduce Commissioner Jeremy Rich for our prayer and
Good evening, everybody. If you wouldn't mind, stand, bow your heads with me. Go to our Lord in prayer. Father, we come to you tonight with thanks. Thanks for the goodness and the mercy that we receive each day. Tonight, we come to you and ask for guidance in the decisions that this county commission makes to benefit the residents of Wilson County. But most of all, I pray that we remember that only through you can we truly prosper. And for that, may all glory be in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'll lead the class in the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Leading the flag to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rich. If you will, please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Commissioner Rich. Commissioner Dow. Twenty-four present and one absent. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Fields is not here, so I'm going to go to Commissioner Brown.
The steering committee met in regular session on Thursday, October 6th. I move the report that's in your packet to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Brown?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda, Commissioner Brown. We have one item there. Motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me. Oh, my bad, because it's got money in it. Alright. Got a vote because it's got money involved in it, my bad. Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes. Special recognition, we have none to my knowledge tonight. Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Tom Breschers to come forward. I need a motion to go out of session.
Motion.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner McFarland, do you have a comment?
I do, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about before. Can we get a new projector for the left-hand screen?
I think we're, did we move it all over here?
You got a presentation.
It's real dim. I just...
Yeah, and I think we moved it all over here, Commissioner McFarland, I believe.
They have a presentation, after the presentation, then they're going to switch it over.
Got you. So they'll move it back over there for you, so we can see. Yep. Tom?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you're enjoying the crisp weather and the fall leaves. It's been pretty this week. At this time, October 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or thereafter, we're to hold a public hearing in the county commission room here at 228 East Main Street for the purposes of considering a rezoning request or an application made by CP Logistics to rezone 2050 Gwen Road from A1 agricultural zoning to C4 plan commercial zoning. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 141, parcel 12.02, and contains approximately 6.56 acres total. A copy of this request is on file in the Wilson County Planning Office, which is located in the basement of this very building and has been available during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to comment on this matter is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone here to speak on the property? Seeing none, one. We will close public comment period and go back into session. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion? Commissioner Smith, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back in the session, Mr. Tom.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, application has been made for rezoning of the property as laid out in the public hearing and is scheduled to come before you as the full commission tonight. The application was made by CP Logistics to rezone property from A1 agricultural to C4 plan commercial. Property is located at 2050 Gwen Road and is referenced as Wilson County Tax Map 141, parcel 12.02, and contains approximately 6.58 acres. This rezoner request was presented to the County Planning Commission on September 16th, 2022, and is being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with a positive recommendation.
Commissioner Evans, it's in your district, so I'll let you speak on it first.
I've heard no dissent.
Do I hear a motion for the property?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
What's your recommendation? I know it came through the commission as positive. You also agree with it?
Yes, we recommended approval of it based on the fact that it was consistent with the land use plan, and it's also surrounded on, I believe, two and a half to three sides by already zoned C4 property.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record reflect as unanimous.
One thing I will note in response to Mr. Glover's question that's specific about this property, it does front on Gwen Road, but the proposed use of the property for C4 purposes, office, industrial, warehousing-type uses, all of their access will be afforded by the internal circulatory public road network and driveway network that's within that pre-existing commercial development to the south and will not have direct access to Gwen Road vehiscularly.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Thank you.
You too, sir. Report from the minutes committee, Commissioner Denton.
Yes, sir. We met this Thursday, October 6th. We had a rather lengthy meeting from 5:26 to 5:29, and we had one correction. It was a misspelled last name, and that was corrected. And so I move tonight that we receive our minutes as printed in your packet tonight with the corrections already printed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reading of the minutes, do I hear?
Move to the expense of meeting of the minutes?
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This time, we'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Galen Wilson and Ms. Susan Shaw to talk just a few minutes about Wilson Rides and the license plate. And she's going to talk a little bit about the license plate opportunity that somebody donated to us, and this will go for our people in the audience as well, if you have an interest in that. And then Erin and Cory, I have one here who mentioned something about the two-factor identification. If you want to speak on that, you can speak after they get to. If there's anything you want to talk to the commission about on that, if you'd like to talk to them a few minutes, okay? Ms. Galen?
Thank you, Mayor Hutto. I see a lot of new faces in here. Hopefully, you guys recognize me. That means I'm doing my job if you do recognize me. I'm the executive director of Wilson Rides. We are a local nonprofit here in Wilson County that provides rides to seniors who no longer drive or seldom drive. We use fully-vetted volunteers to provide those rides. Over 50% of the rides are to medical appointments, which is really the purpose and the reason that Wilson Rides started, was to make sure that our seniors, who are our neighbors, our aunts, uncles, parents, grandparents, members of church, those are these, those are the folks that we're giving rides to. But it's to make sure that they do not miss their medical appointments. That is the main purpose that we were started. We do give rides, you know, for other things that keep them healthy mentally and physically. We are here this evening because we have a special opportunity for you. We have the Wilson County specialty license plate. If you notice, it doesn't say Wilson Rides on it, but it is, it does promote Wilson County the place to be. We have been selling or pre-ordering these license plates for a little while. You have to get 1,000 commitments in order for the plates to be made. As you know, a portion of the proceeds have to go to a nonprofit. Wilson Rides is the chosen nonprofit for these license plates. We had several sponsors who recognized how difficult it is to go to get 1,000 individual names, you know, for a license plate that is, in general, generic. It's generic in that it's Wilson County, meaning it isn't for breast cancer awareness or honeybees. You know, all University of Tennessee license plates, Go Vols, right? I'm a Gator, so congratulations, what a great game that was, by the way. Anyway, they recognized how difficult it was to get 1,000 individual names. So we had several sponsors who purchased 100 license plates and said, "Sign up our employees, and if we have any leftover, sign up people." And so we did have some leftover from these sponsors, and if you would like, I'm here to offer the license plate to any of you who are here tonight, you can get it free. You do not have to pay that $35 specialty license plate fee that you have to pay normally for the first year. So if you would like one of these license plates tonight, this is your opportunity. There should be a form on your desk. Please sign up tonight and turn it in tonight. And thank you. Thank you for that. Mayor Hutto?
Yes, and you did cover it well. And so it becomes a, it becomes a funding source for Wilson Rides, and so it also promotes our county. You guys adopted this tag a year ago. We do believe we'll have probably within a month, all of them sold. But those donations for a free tag is there, and so we just, we wanted to offer that to our commissioners tonight. There's one of these on your desk. If you'd like to fill that out, you get the free tag. If you have, you want to fill out one for your wife, you're welcome to do that, because we may have enough for them as well. And anyone in the audience that would like one of these, I've got these back here. As a matter of fact, I'll give them to Susan, and if you'll raise your hand, she'll bring you one by right now, where you could sign up as well. Leave them on the back table for the audience, folks. I'll pick those up. And my commissioners, just leave those on your desk, and I'll come by and get them and take them to my office when we get through tonight, okay? Yes, ma'am.
For those of you who've not seen the license plate, it was designed by a Wilson Central High School student many years ago. I believe that student has graduated now from college, actually, and out in the workforce. But it's a beautiful plate, and I heard many times over at the Oktoberfest how many people like this plate versus the one that they currently have. So here's your chance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you would reach and tell Teresa, I just got an email that the streaming live of the commission meeting ended, so if you could just tell her, in case she doesn't know that. And Erin or Cory, I know you want to speak on what we need to make sure that we have done here. And Commissioner McFarland would like a new camera that shows up better here, if we could order one. Projector. Yeah, he got it.
You should have received the email or notified you of switching to multi-factor authentication. What that is, is more secure ability for us. If anyone tried to hack your email, they won't be able to get it. If you would, stop by and see Cory and myself after this meeting takes less than two minutes to get you set up. You have any questions, feel free to contact me there.
And because of this, insurance is requiring this as well, correct?
It was something that was on in that, it was like 20 other years.
Okay, alright. Thank you, sir. Mr. Goodall, anybody to be added to my notary list?
We're good.
We're good to go. Here a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? G.I. asks you to confirm two of my appointments to the two members of the G.I.S. committee. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Beth Bowman and Commissioner Blake Hall. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Equalization member, we realized during the Board of Equalization, as Mr. Blake Hall, Commissioner Blake Hall became a commissioner, we called to check to see, can a commissioner serve on Board of Equalization? And we learned of our mistake at that time and that the fact that, yes, a commissioner can serve, but a county employee cannot. And so since he's a county employee, I had to remove him from that. We had a longtime alternate, Mr. Russell Neal, and that's who I'm going to suggest tonight to take his place. The one that we had also on here as an alternate, we learned could not serve, and so I won't be able to bring that one to you tonight. But in front of you right now is to ask your consideration of moving Mr. Russell Neal from an alternate to a full-time member of the Board of Equalization. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from the emergency management committee, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you. The emergency management committee met Tuesday, September 27th, at the Wema Training Center. I move these minutes to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Emergency manager's directors' report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commission. Our call report for September is running pretty normal. As far as our status, right now, we're nine positions short. The recruits are currently in the fire program. And that entails they've completed one week of orientation, two weeks of emergency responder, seven weeks of fire training. They've learned firefighter safety and survival, SCBA, air consumption drills, ladder training, building construction, forceful entry, and a whole lot more. They have been traveling from either headquarters to other stations, to other facilities in the county to accomplish these tasks. So we're very busy with that. We currently have 12 applications, eight for AMT and four for paramedic. That certified class will start soon. On November the 1st, we'll have an EMA committee from 5:00 to 6:30. During that committee, we're going to do a station and equipment tour. So any of you that wants to join that, we'll provide travel for you if you don't want to drive your car. But you're welcome to come and kind of see what we do as far as personnel and equipment. You're invited for that. November the 1st, from 5:00 to 6:30.
Location?
We will start off at the Training Center on Oak Street and do our first tour there and then leave from there to do the rest of it.
It's a field trip.
Field trip, yes, sir. Everybody likes a field trip, right? Might even have some good snacks, you know? So if you feel interested, please join us. And yes. I'm sorry.
We'll do our meeting 15 minutes or so prior to that.
Yes.
Start at 5:00.
Yes. So we will have our regular meeting prior to, then we'll do the tour. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions out there.
Maybe we're saving files.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from the law enforcement committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Law enforcement committee met on September 28th, 2022, at 5:00 PM in the sheriff's office training room. Minutes in your pocket, may move that they be accepted and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sheriff's report, Chief Mike Owen. Namaste.
I missed you today.
Yeah, I got it. I get embarrassed now. Good evening, everybody. Sheriff's office report for the month of September. Calls are pretty in line, well in line with what was present last month, but we are 608 calls above what we had this time last year. As far as the open positions in the sheriff's office, we have two certified dispatch openings and 14 correction officer openings. Jail inmate population is staying below max, and they're doing a really good job with that. We have 12 inmates going out state today, tomorrow, and the next day. So we have 12 more pushing out, so it's going to keep that population down some. You've asked us to, I believe you asked us to keep an eye on this noise complaints and disturbances, as disturbing the peace. We talked a little bit about this at the law enforcement meeting, and these are the stats from the month of September. We had 41 noise complaints. Forty-one, okay? Sounds like a lot. But 22 were from a church down in west end of the county, one church. So 22 of those calls from a church. Four calls were from a cannon being fired in the northeast part of the county. So the remainder of the 12, I think it's 12 calls, which were barely nothing, really. I mean, we've got everything from the donkey to the motorcycle to kids playing in the street, okay? So it's kind of like what's been discussed. The majority of the noise complaints and the disturbances and problems kind of stem from two places. I wish I had an answer how to fix it, because I don't. I wish I knew what to do to fix it, and I don't. So if you get any more calls, please keep sending them to me, and I'll do my best to talk to them and let them vent. But at the end of the day, there's not a whole lot we can do with either one.
Commissioner Dow?
That's what I was going to ask you. Do you think we need to pass an ordinance or something to maybe get something done about them? Because I've got them, I've got them in my district also.
I'm not a very...
And I think it comes up before, and I think it somehow or another, it got by the wayside. But I do have a, it's a pretty serious issue out there that's getting volatile now.
I'm not the smartest person to deal with this, but when, just common sense here when it comes to a church worshiping. I don't know how you could, I don't, I don't know how you can tell someone how loud they could sing or how loud they could play their music. I can't, I can't get there. I think there's too much protection by the federal law, but I'm not that person. I don't, I wish I knew the answer, but I don't. We will, I guarantee the sheriff's office, sheriff's department, if we're asked to enforce, we will enforce any law or any ordinances by this commission, without a doubt, okay? Just so it's legal. Don't want to do anything now that would affect maybe a possible lawsuit against sheriff's office or the county by going out and acting on something we don't have authority to.
Commissioner McFarland?
Just to share with the commission, the previous commission looked at a, at a noise ordinance, and it kind of got out there, and I'm not sure died on the vine or whether it's still kind of active. But Commissioner Kurtz, I knew chairman, and I think we just need to revisit it and see, is it valid to move ahead with that or not, so.
I was just going to add, Mr. McFarland was under the weather of the last committee, and we brought it back up then and had a resident there. And it is something that's being looked at by the committee first. And I think Mayor Jennings is, I know he sent us out kind of a draft of what to look at, so.
A lot of times, if I may, sir, a lot of times, the commission will get, commissioners will get complaints in their district, and it never go to the sheriff's department.
That's true. That's true.
We don't know about it, so.
Commissioner Keith, any comments?
Yeah, I'm not happy about the cannon, to say the least. I don't want to say overstep my bounds, but that's, that's public nuisance.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to speak up. The church is just adjacent to my district. It's just outside my district, but affects my district. I'm five miles from the church and can hear the music.
Yeah.
And I have a lot of churches in my district. I've never had one complaint on a church in my district ever, except I've never heard another church five miles away either. So it's, I got to believe that, you know, most churches want to be good neighbors, but there ought to be something that we can do to, to encourage that. Because I don't want to put the church out of business. I want people to pray. I don't mind hearing people praying. It's not, it's not people praying and singing that I'm hearing. It's drums and, and just everything. I mean, it will rattle your windows of your car if you're anywhere near this thing. It's loud.
Commissioner Brown, any comments?
I think we've already spoke about it, and I understand there's federal and state protection, which I'm all for that. What we're talking about is not the right to, to religious freedom. It's more of the volume that is affecting quality of life of residents around them. So I hope we can find some kind of solution through a noise ordinance. And if we can't, I think we owe the public that answer as well. If the, if Wilson County does not want to take that on, we need to be able to provide that information. If they want to seek civil remedy through illegal actions, then they can.
Commissioner Dow?
Aren't churches, are we talking Commissioner Franklin, like at 11 o'clock on Sunday, or is it night? Or what is it? Because yours is different from what I'm talking about. This right here is going on between two neighbors' churches on Sunday or Wednesday, or Sunday night. So, I mean, the racetrack's going on out there. We're going to try to ban them. You know what time that is. You know what time church is. This is going on at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning. So it's a little different than, than the church. So I, I don't know if you can exclude them or, or what, but you know what time church is. I can hear, I can hear hilkay, especially when Brother Glenn was preaching. So, I mean, you know...
Right, that's from the minutes.
But, I mean...
Meant for you too.
He just hoped you were listening.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else, Chief Owen?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move the report be received and filed.
Agreed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Report from the education committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education committee met Thursday, October 6th, 5:00 in the conference room. Minutes were in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director of schools' report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have my copy of this report packet. Board of Education did meet regular scheduled meeting October 3rd and gave you a summary there of action that was taken. We did get our calendars approved for the next two school years. Just so everybody knows, we'll be staying on the calendar that is, matches the one we're currently on. We will be, once we get it approved by the state, that will be our next two years' calendar. Board did also vote to extend contract on land through November the 30th. We continue to work through that. You have our enrollment, current enrollment and numbers, and just you can read that. Shows who's enrolled since we started school. Do point out that we're up 780 students from the end of the school year, and in the last 12 months, from 9:30 to now, that number is up 805. So we're outpacing where we were at last year when we had over almost 800 new students. So we'll be continuing to watch that, and I will be continuing to report on that. Also included is our adult high school, and that's a very, very important program, and we want to report on that. We have 57. 24 of those are students that are from our high schools that are choosing that option. And we've already graduated 23 high school students this year, students that went ahead and chose to either go to the workforce or sometimes military. They'll go through the adult program, go ahead and start their military training. We're continuing to be at 96% attendance rate for the year, which is outstanding for a district our size. Very proud of the efforts of our attendance team, our principals, in working to make sure kids are in school. On top of that, I've included a couple of handouts, giving you some facts on adult literacy, facts in the United States, and coupling that with, it is September 18th, 24th, we celebrate adult education, family literacy. And adult education is still important to our country, and we have a great adult learning center. Sandy Anderson's our coordinator. Uh, Sandy Anderson's our coordinator. Sean Cabin serves as a director of that. Uh, and we take care from our, from our adult education to, uh, people want to get a GED. Included some things we do with that, some things we're doing is providing literacy classes. Uh, we partner with local recovery homes and, and get those people that are in, in need of not just some other aspects. We've got to partner with them where we, we will help them receive and further education. Uh, offering our ESL classes in Lebanon and Mount Juliet. Uh, we also offer our GED classes, go to the jail and, and to help with that. So it's a great program and I would encourage you, be glad to give you a tour if you'll let me know. Just give me a call or an email me. I would like for you to see what's going on just besides K, pre-K-12 education and it's important. Uh, and these are great programs and I'd be glad to give you a tour of that program or any other tour. If you, if you want to see what's going on in one of our schools, get in touch with me and, uh, I'll be glad to show, show you what we're doing. Uh, with that also in September, uh, Cumberland University, we took a thousand seniors from Wilson County Public High Schools to their campus for their annual Wilson County College Fair. They, uh, got to, our students got to the opportunity to learn about Cumberland as well as forty other colleges, uh, around the state. And, uh, that's an annual event that Cumberland does and it's a great, uh, way for our students to go to one spot and, and get a lot of information on furthering their education. Uh, also highlighting in our report is, is our Family Resource Center. It's another great program we run. Uh, September the twenty-fourth was, was a food giveaway. We do these regularly and we had thirty-one families, uh, went to Emmanuel and received their food. Fifty-eight came through our drive-through, uh, or to central office to receive food. Also this past month, Publix made us a donation of sixteen thousand dollars that can be used for school supplies, uh, for kids. And, and that's Family Resource Center takes that and gets our students and families the resources they need for school. Construction project update, Stoner Creek is coming right along. Uh, we have received some panels, believe it or not, that we were waiting on, worried about being able to get four hundred amp panels. They came in. Uh, we are hopefully looking here in November of taking control of that building. Uh, we will know for sure Wednesday or, or no, get an update Wednesday, construction meeting. That is what we're working toward. I will tell you, as soon as we can get moved in, we're gonna put our students in that building and get them out of the portables. That may mean that our open house, we have to delay it. We're still in the planning phases of what that looks like. We might do something in December with that. And I think the highest priority is getting those kids in those classrooms. Uh, but, you know, we'll, we'll just have to see. There's still a lot of work to be done, but we're working hard. Do want to point out that our, uh, this project, if, if we get in in November, it'll be three months early and what the contract called for, and that's phenomenal. Uh, a lot of work planning on the construction company, architects, engineers, our team, uh, getting furniture ordered and all those things. So, uh, we're, we're pretty excited where it's at, but we know we've got to finish it and then the next three weeks is, is going to be crucial. Uh, Wes Wilson, if you've passed by there, we have started that, working on the, uh, pad for that building. Uh, that will have, also have a two-year timeframe. We're hoping by getting started when we did, that we're gonna gain these fall dry months and, and hopefully push that project up a little bit. Uh, of course, it will be dependent upon the weather. Also included for you, flyer on the Taste of Wilson County. I encourage you to participate in that. That'll be this Thursday night. I think some of us will be competing and grilling.
Sarah, come out there and I'll serve you steak.
Well, I might want to file a complaint. You won last year and I don't, I don't see how, but, uh, I think you won last year. Uh, but that, that's a good event. And, and for you that are not familiar with the Chamber of Commerce sponsors this, Lebanon. And in total, over two hundred and sixty thousand teacher grants have been awarded through this program. There's grants that have been awarded to teachers' classrooms that they're still using those same materials ten, twelve, fifteen years later. Uh, and, and this is the big fundraiser for that. So I encourage you to stop by. We will have some free food. Uh, there'll be some other food trucks and, and it's just a great event and you get to see what's going on in our community. And do want to thank Lebanon Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this. Uh, they do a lot of work and it helps us greatly. Finishing up fall sports is winding down. Shout out to Lebanon volleyball, they compete in the state tournament. It's huge for them, that program. Still got Watertown Soccer is still alive and we, we may have another soccer team still alive. They'll play in this week. Cross-country runners are running everywhere, but they're winding down and working on those times. That's an important part of the year for them. Golf had a successful fall season and of course football playoffs will be just around the corner. Do want to mention, I was not here last week and I think they brought up, want to give you a report on current openings in Wilson County schools. We have forty-one, uh, certified teaching positions open. We filled one of them today, cut that to forty. Uh, and, uh, total classified, this includes our bus drivers, this includes our, uh, cafeteria staff. We still have about eighty openings. Uh, and we're still working daily recruiting, making phone calls and contacts, uh, trying to get people, uh, to come to work. We, and I will tell you, we've hired more than ever. Uh, we'll, we'll hire one and one will quit, seems to be. And that's the job market, but it, it, there's some openings out there. But at the same time, it says something about our staff. Uh, we're taking that money, I think I mentioned last month, we will be paying our teachers extra to cover these classes. Uh, moving forward, if, it, we'll be giving them money from that substitute, dividing it up when they have to share the responsibilities. But, but I want to give the shout out to them, uh, for making sure our schools are still effectively running and taking care of our student needs. That's my report. Unless there's any questions.
Commissioner Kurtz.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Luttrell, you're selling yourself short a little bit. Um, the graduation rates, I didn't do good on the ACT, but I graduated high school. And graduation rates came out and, and if you look at them, Wilson County schools is really the top in the state. There's eight, seven schools ahead of us, but if you added all those students together, they still wouldn't equal the number of students that graduated from our schools. So I think there's kudos to the school system, uh, ninety-eight percent, I believe, is where we were at.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that. And, and I'll give a shout out back to the people that make that happen, it's people behind the scenes, uh, that are making the phone calls, you know. During, even during the pandemic, we were reaching out to kids, getting kids the materials they needed, uh, giving them alternate paths. Sometimes that's a big thing and that, that's a shout out to you for the funding. We've got some alternate paths that for, for kids, students that there gets a point where things happen. And we, we have great connections with those students. We have resources for those students where we can guide them and advise them. And there's some great, great stories come out of that adult ed program and the programs they offer that helps kids get, get that high school diploma. But thank you, we're very proud of that stat.
Commissioner McFarland.
Jeff, it's just a curiosity question. Of, of the surge of students that would have seven hundred and eighty, do you have any data on where they're coming from? New York, California?
All over the country.
I mean, there's no specific data, there's three hundred from New York and two hundred from California?
We don't track that. I have to track enough data, but just knowing and meeting families, uh, we're seeing an influx from New York, uh, California.
What?
That's, that's the two that I know, just meeting families and students that are coming. And, and, and every time you talk to them, because I ask them, how'd you find us? They're searching us out for, for this county, for this quality of life and for our education system. That, there's enough data out there that they're looking and seeing and they know their kids come here and get an opportunity for an education.
Any other question for Director Luttrell? Got a motion, second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Director Luttrell, just for the sake of argument, Scott Benson won last year and he only won because it was on his way out. I mean, they, they gave it to him on the way out, so. So that's why we didn't get it, but.
They might not want to win last year.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I decline. Commissioner Dees report, Ms. Murphy is with us and in the audience today and she has a pretty extensive report on your desk. We appreciate her doing that. Do I hear a motion to approve it? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you for being here. I'm sure, Ms. Murphy, if you have any question, we'll be here when we get through for you to answer questions. Trustee's report is also in the packet. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Road Superintendent report, Mr. Steve Murphy.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, to this date, we paved twenty-seven point one eight seven. Uh, we're probably gonna shut down our pavement. We've got some issues with our oil distributors, so we ain't gonna be able to shoot any oil or some tax. So we're gonna do, we've got some patch work we gotta do. Uh, we're doing, which we've got a patch crew that's been working daily anyway, but they'll be patching too. Our bush hogs are still running and we're gonna keep them running and try to cut back some areas throughout the county that needs to be cut back, curbs and stuff like that. Uh, armed tractors are running and we're just doing our general maintenance. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Well, if any of you's been by the fairgrounds out there, you'll know that we've been full every weekend. Expo's staying full. Gail, I'm sure is gonna report to you on that. Uh, we've got, uh, Little Britches Rodeo coming up this month. Uh, we got a boar goat sale that's going on, the Christmas light. Guy's been there about three weeks now. Uh, he's getting those lights put up and we're hoping for a successful light show out there this time. He's actually expanded it a little bit from where he's at. Uh, the Tennessee building, uh, hopefully we're gonna, it'll be done sometime in December if we don't have any more setbacks on, on materials that they need to, to complete it. Uh, that's about all I have for you tonight. Does anybody got any questions?
I have motion to approve the report. Second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Smith. Expo Center Director's report, Ms. Gail Hibbit.
Mayor and Commissioners, I see a bunch of new faces I've not had a chance to meet, so I hope at some point you come by the expo and see what we're doing. So tonight I've got, um, a quick report for you, uh, but with some additional details. So I wanted to start off with the sign. We have four new signs that are off of either the exit or eight, or Interstate forty. And, uh, that was a labor of love. That took a long time, but we did get them up and, um, they look great. And already the, one of the major event planners that we have, who prompted, why don't you have a sign on the interstate to tell where the Expo Center is? He is going to be thrilled because he arrives tomorrow. So this got here, got put in about three weeks before he arrived. So I'm gonna be able to prove to him that we did listen to him and we did get the signs up. The second image that I wanted to show everybody is that for the second year in a row, we were the readers, we won the Reader's Choice Award for Convention South, which is a collection of meeting planners that know of us or have used us throughout the region. And to be able to get selected in that, there were over four hundred and some in the running for being selected and only a hundred and seventy were selected. So I was very proud that two years in a row, we were able to make this list and get recognized. So I think that says a lot about the events that we're having and the people understanding that we're here and what we have to offer. So, um, with that being said, I've had some questions about where our revenue is coming from. And so I kind of wanted to share a couple of stats with you. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, to date, over fifteen million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four square feet have been rented cumulatively through our events. Our, our venue is seventy-nine thousand square feet. That's a lot, an awful lot. And Wilson County events, so we divide it up, we track it, Wilson County, state and national. So Wilson County comprises about eleven percent of that fifteen million and some change. And Tennessee events actually comprise about forty-seven percent, a little over forty-seven percent. With international or international, not international, um, statewide or national, across this country wide, forty-one percent. So you can see the majority of our revenue is coming from outside our county. Um, so that's bringing new money in. We're not just kind of recycling money from within the county, which is exciting because a lot of those events are bringing people into hotels and into the restaurants and so forth. So it's kind of multiplying on the other fronts that we wanted to do that, so it will support the county. And I just felt like that was important to share. And if you look at it, if you break that down, that eleven, forty-seven and forty-one percent, twenty-nine of those events are national. Eighty-one are state and sixty are Wilson County. So it just, you, what that tells you is, is the ones that cross the national or throughout the state, they're, they're renting more space, is what they're doing. And that's bringing us more money that's outside our county. So I wanted to share that with you before I shared the financials with you. Um, you will see on the August report, not number that I'm looking forward to, not number that I like, um, but we did come out in the negative. There's a few reasons for that. Um, we thank you for the, the pay increase. That was great. We love that. We appreciate that. But that is because we do report our, everything, our, um, salaries, our, all of our expenses, that's now coming out of our profits. Okay, so that's one thing. And secondly, our electric bill is ridiculous. I'm just gonna say it, it's just ridiculous. Last year in August of twen- twenty-one, our electric bill was eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six. In August of twenty-two, our electric bill was twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight. And our other utilities also spiked, but that was the biggest one. So those are notable. Those are real notable. And then you'll also see a side note, um, I wasn't able to finish billing out the Tennessee State Fair for their twenty-two days in the building, because I don't have all the data yet to be able to do that. So that's also missing for that. So once I have that, I can give you an updated report in August. Um, in September, we, we squeal, squeach, or kind of slid by and we came out about a thousand, a little over a thousand, twelve hundred dollars to the good, which I was elated with because with the electric bill going up and the salaries now coming out of it, um, at a higher rate, that was good. We covered our expenses. We were self-sufficient with that. That was incredible. And I'm super excited about the fact that October's already at seventy thousand and we're not even done with the month. So you can see, I said once before, it's an ebb and flow. It's kind of the law of averages. You can see that the end of the year starts paying those dividends back to kind of make up for maybe what June, July and August don't give us. Um, and then on the last sheet I have that I believe is in your packet, we divided these up. You can see it is national, state and, um, Wilson County. And you can see what we've got scheduled for the rest of the year. And of course, this changes every day. This was good as of two weeks ago, okay? It's not valid anymore. There's a couple more that have been added and one that's canceled, but, um, this is, this is how busy we are. And we are actually looking at the possibility of maybe having to make some adjustments in how we schedule. Um, kind of toying with the different variabilities and how that might affect us to be able to do more. And also looking at some additional revenue capabilities that we might be able to charge for. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yes, I got a question.
Sure.
Like on, like if somebody comes out and say if I rent it two years ago, say if I'm renting it for five years, am I, do you lease that or rent it the same amount? Or do you try to adjust your?
Well, first of all, you wouldn't be able to rent it for five years.
Well, just say if I was doing-
But three, three, yes. So if you come out and you write a contract for three years, you will get that same rate for three years, which is why they want to do that. They want to lock that in. Um, and then we just had a rate increase that actually went live in August. And so there were some that got wind of that, some I might have told because I wanted to make sure I kept them because they're solid event planners that pay well. Um, and so we went ahead and locked them in a little bit. So it's gonna take us a few, about a year to start realizing that, but yes, that they can lock in for three years.
I just wonder what that does, like we can't, like the- I just wonder what that does, like, we can't, like the light, light bill goes up, that's messing us up.
Um, kind of. I mean, I, I see where you're coming from with that. One of the variables that I'm looking at, having gone to, 'cause I continue to try to spread the word about the venue in the county, um, I've just got back from Little Rock, and, um, a whole lot of the faith-based planners had no idea that we existed. They do now. Um, and talking to some of the other venues, they're ramping back and only booking eighteen months out. Right now, I can book out all the way to twenty-seven. I've got, I've got events on the calendar in twenty-six. So there's some advantage to that, because you have a little bit more pick and choose. Um, and I am in, I am actively, um, in the process of beginning to kinda weed out some that are less, um, financially beneficial for us to have, um, because they don't really generate a lot. Because we generate money with the revenue of the rent. We generate money with vendor fees. We generate money with, um, our preferred vendor program, and then also the ticket sales. Like, we get a dollar per ticket for everything that they sell. So if they don't bring me rent and vendor sales, or rent, vendor sales and tickets, then I'm kind of missing out when I can have something bigger come in and make more money. So that's. That's correct. That's correct, that's correct. And I suspect that October's bill's gonna be pretty close to the same. Somewhere between eighteen and twenty. Any other questions? But that's a good question.
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Thank you, Ms. Gail. We'll say that next month, uh, Wilson County Promotions will be here at six fifteen in order to offer, um, a meal for you guys, kinda like the Chamber did not long ago at six fifteen. They would like to get you at six fifteen, so at six thirty, uh, they could kind of explain to all of our new Commissioners and, and Owens as well, uh, the financial side and how they actually operate. And as we talk about the month of August being a tough month for revenues there, you also go back and look at, you know, that's when the fair was going on. Of course, light bill goes up during that time. But they will, they will give back to the Ag Center anywhere from three to five hundred thousand a year, uh, and put that back into the Ag Center. So as well as pay overtime for our EMTs and our paramedics and our police and Sheriff's Department, maybe do some road stuff. So, so there's a lot of economics that goes with that. And so they'd like to come and just lay that out for you where you could see it, and see that if you may not see a revenue gain there, you will see that bump, uh, when they cash in, uh, for, uh, that month of October, a month of August with their revenues coming back. That's next month, six fifteen here for food, six thirty if you can be here for the presentation. Move to report from Public Works, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center Management met on September the twenty-second, five P.M. Minutes are in your packet, be received and filed.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
Animal Control met on Tuesday, October fourth at five P.M. In the upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No, no report.
Broadband, um, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Development Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance would be Commissioner, um, Costley. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
Insurance, um, Commissioner.
McFarland.
McFarland, I missed. I, I went blank, there was no report. Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland. Rules, Commissioner Keith. Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board met October seventh. Uh, minutes are in your packet, be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
I've really only got, uh, one item of business tonight that needs to be taken care of. Uh, Mr. Smith out at the Ag Center has a, uh, truck that needs to be declared surplus for the auction that's coming up. Um, so I passed that out shortly before the meeting. It's a nineteen ninety-six Chevrolet Cheyenne with two hundred and eleven thousand miles on it. Um, he thinks he can do better selling it from the auction than he can on gov deals based on past experience. So I'm asking you to go ahead and declare that surplus for him tonight, so he can get it into auction.
Okay.
All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Uh, finance reports in your packet. Um, the only thing, uh, Ms. Gail leads me into a, a good point, talking about the, the ebb and flow. You guys are well aware of this, but since we have so many new Commissioners, you know, uh, our current property tax, you know, forty-two million, five hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars is what's budgeted in the general fund, out of total revenue in the general fund of seventy-five million, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. So it's fifty-six point six-four percent of our general fund. And of course, we don't start receiving anything until October. So, and, and October is those few people, like my great-grandmother, who as soon as the bill came in, it had to be written out and carried back and stuck in the mailbox, and the flag popped up that day. Uh, that's the way it had to be. Uh, so you don't even see a ton of it come in in October. So I wanna remind you, when you start looking at these results, uh, that basically a huge chunk of your revenue's sitting out there that hasn't started to come in yet. We don't, we'll start to know a lot more in December, and then of course, a lot more than that in February. Uh, just like to remind you guys of that every once in a while. The rest of the revenues coming in look good, adequate facilities taxes on track, hotel motel taxes doing good. Um, the Ag Center and Expo Center both are doing outstanding. So, uh, that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Thank you, Director Maynard. Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met Thursday, October sixth, upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet, move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Resolutions. Let me explain the first one to them.
Resolution twenty-two dash ten dash two. Um, resolution to accept a grant from Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and American Rescue Plan, uh, for water projects in the county.
I got motion to second. Let me just, give you just a brief discussion on this one. You'll see this one and the last four in the packet tonight. Uh, we received an opportunity for a grant of four million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, with that, uh, that money can only go to utility districts and stormwater. So what we did, we met with that group, and we'll apply on their behalf to get them that money. All four utility districts will get a million, uh, half a million will go to stormwater. And we actually get so much money for actually administering that grant as well, that it goes straight into the fund. But that's how, that, that's what you're gonna see with these and the next four. But that is part of doing the grant. We had to get your permission to do that, uh, and then we'll go from there. But it's lucrative really for our office to do that. It's good for the utility districts. The utility districts can only spend this on items they already have, not new, uh, water lines or anything like that. So you take, for example, uh, Wilson County Water and Wastewater Authority are gonna redo, I think, their, um, uh, their meters, a new meter system that goes in. So, but that, it has to be on something that's already planned. And they've already submitted that to Christie in our office, and she is working on that. Sorry to give you that, but wanted you to have at least an explanation. Do I hear a motion? I got it, a second? Any discussion? I just did that. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Denton? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two dash ten dash three, to approve a receipt of a fully resum- refundable grant from the Tennessee Tourism and Hospitality Recovery Fund Program.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Discussion now, Commissioner McFarland.
Um, Ms. Chairman, I noticed that some of the, including this one, uh, apparently went for the Budget Committee on six October. However, there's not a vote on there. Sir?
Any other questions? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, four, approving a lease agreement for the Wilson County Finance Department.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three yes, one no, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, five, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment twenty-three dash oh-three.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, six, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment twenty-three dash oh-two.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say, I'm sorry, no, my bad. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, seven, approving a lease agreement for the Wilson County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Bernard? Mr. Marlowe? How are you, Mr. Marlowe? You bet you know what you got. I got you, okay. Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes. Okay.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, eight, accepting a grant on the twenty-two, twenty-three enforcement of Tennessee driving under the Influence Laws Grant Program, and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the state of Tennessee and Wilson County, Tennessee.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, nine, accepting a grant on the twenty-two, twenty-three enforcement of the Tennessee Animal Friendly Spay and Neuter Grant, and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the state of Tennessee and Wilson County, Tennessee.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, ten, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation from the general fund into veteran services.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, eleven, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions, make an additional appropriation from Rural Debt Fund one fifty-two into Rural Debt.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, twelve, to reflect revenues received and not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation to juvenile services.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, thirteen, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation from the general fund one fifty-one to general debt.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, fourteen, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from general fund balance to drug court.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, fifteen, to reflect revenues received and not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation to animal control.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, sixteen, accepting the proposal for state highway improvements on Mount Juliet Road from Terrace Hill Road to Adele's Garden Road, and authorizing the mayor of Wilson County to sign the proposal.
Don't move.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. This is the Highway Seventy section in front of West Wilson, I mean, West Elementary. Construction to start in the spring of twenty-three. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Commissioner Dow, would you leave, uh, Commissioner Jones alone? Twenty, twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, seventeen, accepting the proposal for state highway improvement on Mount Juliet Road from Central Pike to Providence Way, and authorizing the mayor of Wilson County to sign the proposal.
Don't move.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Jones and Commissioner Dow again. Put a noise ordinance on them. Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two, ten, eighteen, to approve and accept the bond Wilson County Road Commissioner Zone Four for Robert D. Franklin.
Got a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The record reflector is unanimous. And I've got four, Mr. Marlowe. I still got four more. They were emailed to you. These are the four I talked to you about on the first one that was done tonight. So it's just actually repetition of each utility district. Got a motion to suspend the rules?
Amen.
And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Denton?
I'd like to have a question after he finishes his.
Yes, sir.
Before he closes.
Okay. Commissioner Marlowe?
In?
22-10-19?
Yeah, what I was asking, are all these the same except for a different?
They all are the same except for a different utility district. Got Lagarda, Wilson County Water and Wastewater Authority, West Wilson, and Wilson County Stormwater.
Because it doesn't.
I got separate resolutions. Should we pass them all individually?
You could make a motion to consolidate those and vote on them all at once. Two votes right there and you just need four to approve all of them.
So move.
A motion and a second to consolidate the four. Again, these are the four that add up to the 4.5 million of the TDEC grant that we can submit to the utility districts. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? They are. Commissioner Jones?
They're going to use it at the Ag Center out there in front of the Tennessee Maye Building will be part of that. They'll submit that. They have two other project things that go with that to make up their half a million. But they'll have to submit that and it'll have to be approved by TDEC.
Commissioner Denton, is this when you wanted to speak?
I'll speak at the end of his, when he gets through with everything. I just want to speak to.
New business? Got you, okay. Are we ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Got a motion and a second? Oh, motion to consolidate. Motion to consolidate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we're ready to vote on the four of them that are consolidated. Okay, on the computer, right? Yeah, okay. I have a motion for that and a second. And we're working on the screen for you to vote in just a second. Are you ready to vote? Ms. Doughty, we're ready? You ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Understand what we're voting on. Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes? I do have, before we go to old business, for any of you that would like to hear a recap of the UT 52 to 49 win over Alabama, turn on the radio in the morning at 7:30 WNT. Larry Tomlinson and Mike Jennings will be on there to do that. Any old business to come before the body? Any new business? And I'm going to go to Commissioner Denton first.
Actually, I thought Commissioner Marlowe was through and so I was just going to address a question to him. And he may need to defer to somewhere else about their meeting the other night. It was brought up again, Mr. Gentry mentioned giving some raises to our poll workers. I don't have a problem with the committee's decision, where they handled that. We won't do it procedure-wise, that's what I'm for. But I do think we've had precedent where we didn't, where we've stepped out before, so. But my question is what wasn't said, and that was that our election commission director has said that she was asked not to ask for much upfront in the beginning. And first of all, I'd like to know why, because she's not a novice to that job. She's fully aware of everything going on when she was appointed there. And also, there was a need for this year being it was going to be a heavy election year. And then I'd like to know who asked her not to and with what authority. She wouldn't have had to have asked for any funding had her budget not been stymied from the beginning. And maybe I'm missing something here, but I, Mr. Commissioner Marlowe?
I was under the impression that her election commission asked her not to ask, not, not, not this commission.
Okay.
But the committee.
The election commission?
That would be, that is true. Her election commission asked her not to do that. We will address that as well as the Beer Board and Boza and planning and all that. We've done a study on that. So when it comes time to start budget here in a few months, we'll present those to you to be competitive with the counties around us. So we've already done the work on that. So we're ready to bring that at that time. Again, that would be your call to do that this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So thank you very much. Commissioner Marlowe, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. On Resolution 16 and 17, I have no doubt that there's a lot of need for work on Mount Juliet Road. I've traveled it enough to know that there is. But Lebanon Road from the two-lane part of Lebanon Road needs to be addressed in the worst way.
So I can answer some of that for you?
But I understand from Wilson, I mean, from Mount Juliet that they stated that, the state stated that they'd run out of funds for this year. If that's true, and if Mount Juliet has asked for, for them to address Lebanon Road and Highway 70, what can we do as a commission to assist Mount Juliet in being a part of the squeaky wheel to get this looked at?
So to answer your question, the area from Benders, from Tri-Green all the way out to Bender's Ferry has already been done. Actually, Mount Juliet helped do the engineering part of that. So that is already on the docket to be done. That gets the traffic out to Bender's Ferry to take a right to go to Mount Juliet High School. This section here had been put in front of them several years ago as well, where all the backup happens in front of West Elementary. That whole section of road is 2.9 miles and it has been on the docket before, a long time ago. But when TDOT says to us, we'll spend so much money on your county mayor, where you want to put it. And at that time, a delegation of Mount Juliet said, hey, we'd like to have South Mount Juliet Road. They are also asking today for Central Pike to be widened from Old Hickory Boulevard down to Mount Juliet Road, which crosses a new interchange there. That section there is 88 million. The new interchange that they want at Central Pike and Adams Lane, at Adams Lane and Central Pike is 34 million. So they have those there. So TDOT will spend and have spent already, as you know, widened two times. I-40, 109 has been widened. So they're spending quite a bit of money with us. It's just that we're squeaking the most. We have, a year ago, if you remember, a year and a half ago, all of us signed resolutions, Mount Juliet including, sent those letters to Senator Potey, Representative Lynn, and Representative Boyd that we'd like to be on the list. And so that section of road for the MPO is on the list. It's just like that 88 million for Central Pike. TDOT's got to find funding. And TDOT, you know, as you know, we live in a good state, financially sound, but they don't borrow money to build roads. Had it not been for the Improved Act, we would have not gotten 109 done. There are a few more of those there. So they are trying to address that. Commissioner Ely, the new TDOT commissioner, we, they met with them. I was on Zoom, Mount Juliet did, just about the Central Pike interchange three weeks ago. You know, and we got the same conversation then. We know it's there. We know what we need to do is finding the funding for that. So that's the best answer I can give you. But they know about it. It's on the MPO. It is addressed along with several other. I mean, they're looking also right now of going from 840 to 1 to past 70 for I-40. Again, there's been some conversations about the two-lane road that run in front of the Ag Center out there because of the state fair. So there are a lot of different, a new interchange at the Watertown change. It's the oldest interchange that we have. So there are a lot of discussions going. It's not that they don't know it. And Commissioner Murphy? Road paving today for a mile is, how much you tell me, a million? One lane for a million, yeah. Yeah, one lane. So. And so, on the road commission side, about four months ago or three months ago, we contracted with Collier to start looking at the worst roads in Wilson County based on traffic and safety. And so they'll come back to us with a list of the top 15 roads. But there is the grant that is coming out from the federal administration, the second infrastructure grant. That's what they will apply for to get that money to go for those roads. Hopefully, we get two bites of the apple there is what we're hoping by we're going in early on that. Now, once that gets done, we may come back to the commission and say you want to set aside X number of dollars a year to do some of that, but it is expensive and it will need a ready storm. But the state road, we don't have any jurisdiction on.
I understand that it's, it's on the, it's on the list. It's been on the list for years.
And it's got bumped because they wanted, they bled, they wanted somewhere else to be done.
What determines the, which one, the priority? Thank you. Who determines the priority?
TDOT does that. And then, of course, the cost of the projects are always expensive. But if you look at that stretch of Highway 70, the thing that they told me to, a lot of times you have utilities on one side and you don't have them on the other, so you buy the right of another side and move on. And this one, if you look at that road, you got utilities on both sides. And that makes it, again, an expensive, expensive deal. But they're the ones that take, that do that. Commissioner Glover?
Just while we're talking about roads, are there any updates on 231 North from Forest Avenue up to, say, Carroll Oakland? I know that's one of the most dangerous as far as accidents.
Yeah, I've got, yeah. I do not know that that one is on the radar, but I will definitely, from Forest past Carroll Oakland?
Well, just mainly, because it goes from four lanes in the city of Forest, it goes down to.
Oh, four to two?
With all the apartments and all the traffic.
231 North, I will check on that one.
Even Weema can advise that all the accidents we have there.
Okay. I will, I will ask about that one. Commissioner Bernard?
I was just going to put my dog in that fight too, because a lot of my districts on that east of the north side and I know Commissioner Smith on the other side.
He called me about it the other day.
When they start working on Bender's Ferry, they're going to eat our lunch, because they're going to say, finally, we're getting road widened. It is, it's a, it's a bad, bad need down through there. I just want to put that out there. I ask you quite often about it, but.
I think any of these, and Commissioner Smith called me the other day about this. I mean, anytime you have a need for any road, if you'll just send that to me, let me know. We'll send the letters to them. No problem doing that and we'll fight for them all.
At the telephone post, they just put all new electrical lines down through there, I guess, last year or so. And I got a lot of calls, why didn't they go ahead and set them back to widen the road?
Don't have the right of way. They have to get the right of way.
Yeah, we need some help out there, man.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Any other old business? Any new business?
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.